Everybody, please stand up and put their flags low. My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which always stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, April 16, 2019. The time is now 8:11. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
We have minutes for approval for March 19, 2019. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a note for the record that on April 17, we completed our short-term bond sale. It's a one-year note for $2,36,808, and at a net interest rate of 1.84 percent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Correspondents, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three applications for approval. The first one is Jim Dandies has submitted an application for an extension of premises for the Spring Festival event, which is scheduled for June 13, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Holy Family Church has submitted an event application requesting permission to hold their 28th Annual Italian Festival from Thursday, September 19 through Sunday, September 22.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Holy Family has also submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, September 22, 2019, at 9:00 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, I have two reports, both for the Code Enforcement Department. One is for the first quarter 2019, the other is for the month of March 2019.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
I have my monthly public safety report.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Bill list for April 16, 2019. Public Affairs, $87,160.75. Revenue and Finance, $3,542,639.32. Public Safety, $154,315.15. Public Works, $452,586.51. Parks and Public Property, $104,231.07. Water Utility, $16,521.61.
Move the bills.
Move the bills.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Total payroll, $816,985.44, for a grand total of $5,174,127.85.
Okay, now move the bills.
Second it again.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on the agenda items only? Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements?
I have one, Mayor. On tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock, we will have our annual flashlight Easter egg hunt at Reinhammer Park. It's a great time, everyone should come and experience at least one time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
I have multiple, yes, Mayor. I have just a reminder that on Wednesday, April 24, Thursday, April 25, and on Tuesday, April 30, the Clerk's Office will be open till 8:00 p.m. because we're in a month of April for the annual renewal for dog and cat licenses. So, we're extending the hours to accommodate as many people as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd just like to add that I know, as elected officials, we go to many, many events here in town, and they're all great, but I have to tell you, Saturday night, I went to the SYA, Special Young Adults Event. It was really, really nice to see Annie Rotundo there. I got to meet the new director, Dee. I don't know if any of yous met her. Lovely woman. And most importantly, I got to see all the kids that are there, and I have to tell you, it was held at the Chandelier. They really, really are doing God's work over there. It was incredible. The kids are unbelievable, and I'd just like to give them a little shout-out and say terrific job to them. Thank you.
I saw you dancing, Commissioner.
You saw me dancing. I'm trying to hide that one, but got out.
I have electronics recycling will be this Saturday, and the next, on April 27, we'll have compost day. So, two events coming up. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor. I have one, 3419. This establishes a capital ordinance for the purpose of the revaluation of the township. As we had previously announced, the settlement monies from the Mecca settlement will be used towards offsetting the costs of the revaluation of the town. This ordinance establishes our ability to collect those dollars. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 21, 2019. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Let's move to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 52-34-62C-139 made by a resolution and without advertising for bids, purchase goods or services through the use of a nationally-recognized accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed utilizing a competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey or within any other state when available. And whereas the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley passed Resolution Number 31218 on December 18, 2018, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods or services from approved U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts for the 2019 year commencing January 1, 19 through December 31, 19. And whereas Municipal Clerk Township of Nutley has advertised the township's notice of intent to award a contract under national cooperative purchasing agreement in the March 29, 2019, issue of the Herald News. And whereas the Township of Nutley, in particular, Public Parks and Public Property Department intends to purchase two train commercial rooftop air conditioning units and related accessories from Train North, New Jersey, 19 Chapin Road, Pine Brook, New Jersey, a vendor affiliated with the Omni Partners/US Communities Government Purchasing Alliance Cooperative, which is subject to all conditions applicable to the utilization of a national buying cooperative. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has researched commercial rooftop air conditioning units and related accessories, and have determined that the Train Rooftop Unit Model SFHLF2E, whatever that means, and related accessories is best suited for the township's needs based on performance, cost savings, and minimal downtime. And whereas Train North, New Jersey, has provided a quote for two train rooftop units in the amount of $88,200. And whereas funds are available in the account, capital ordinance number 3408E, account number G-04159405, in the amount of $88,200, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent be and she is hereby authorized to purchase two train rooftop units and related accessories in the amount of $88,200 from Train North, New Jersey, who is an approved Omni Partners/US Communities Government Purchasing Alliance Cooperative vendor. Before I introduce this, I just want everyone to know that by doing it this way, purchasing the units ourselves, we will save a minimum of $15,000 on this. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas in 1949, the legislature set aside the last Friday of April as Arbor Day to promote the planting of trees and to encourage the protection of our forests from fires and pests that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands. And whereas half of New Jersey's total land area is forested or tree-covered, and whereas trees play an important role in the ecosystem in which we live, and trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil caused by wind and water, clean the air we breathe and the water we drink produce oxygen, provide habitat for birds and wildlife, and reduce heating and cooling costs by moderating temperature. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper for fine literature, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees provide increased property value, enhanced economic viability, and pleasing aesthetic qualities along streets and properties and municipalities. And whereas tree planting in yards and farms and schoolyards and parks and along streets and highways creates an enduring heritage for generations that follow. And whereas the Township of Nutley has completed its 32nd year as a member of Tree City, USA. And whereas I, Commissioner Mauro Tucci, Director of Parks and Public Property of Township of Nutley, do hereby proclaim May 4, 2019, as Arbor Day in the community of Nutley, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our town's urban forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants of Montclair, New Jersey, for preliminary assessment for Father Glot's backfield. And whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contracts. Change order number one, preliminary assessment for Father Glot's backfield in the amount of $9,000. And whereas funds are available from account number G-04105404, capital ordinance number 3344D, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of $9,000 be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
So, all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 10219. Whereas the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, has previously issued its bond anticipation notes and other debt obligations in connection with the issuance of certain bonds and for the purposes of assisting underwriters to comply with rule 15C-12 under the Security Exchange Act of 1934, the township has covenanted and/or entered into one or more undertakings or agreements to provide continuing disclosure to the public marketplace. Whereas the township has desires of retaining a professional firm that specializes in continuing disclosure matters to make the necessary filings at the specific places and specified times as part of the township's continuing disclosure obligations. Whereas funds are available from account 901208205, subject to the adoption of the 2019 budget, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification as attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex. One, the Mayor and Township Clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with NW Financial Group, Two Hudson Place Hoboken, for the services of professional financial audit for a total amount not to exceed $1,500, in accordance with the proposal dated April 10, 2019. Two, this contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA 4811-518 of the Local Public Contracts Law, because the contract is for a service performed by a person or person authorized by law to practice a recognized profession that is regulated by law. Notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun and the legal newspaper of the Township of Nutley. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey Statute 54-4333 provides certain war veterans who have suffered serious disability while in service, full tax exemption from their principal residence. Whereas Michael Walsh was granted full exception from payment of property taxes from July 30, 2017, and all subsequent years thereafter from Block 5500, Lot 10, known as the 43 Gerard Road, on August 15, 2017, through Resolution Number 170-17. Whereas Mr. Walsh received a homestead rebate in error for the year 2016, which was applied to the second quarter of 2019 property tax record. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund the 2016 homestead rebate in the amount of $419.19, applied to the second quarter 2019 property tax of Mr. Walsh. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey Statute 48-19 provides that where debt services be paid prior to the 2019, in 2019, prior to the time of the final adoption of the 2019 budget, appropriation should be made for the amount of such debt service in the manner and time provided during it. Whereas the date of this resolution is subsequent to December 20, 2018, whereas debt service will become due during the first six months of 2019. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the following temporary appropriation be made. Interest on bonds, $74,066, for account 901818254. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has been ordered by the Essex County Board of Taxations and the taxation in the New Jersey Division of Taxation to conduct the revaluation of all real property within the municipality for the year 2021. To perform this revaluation, township has a need to acquire the services of a revaluation firm as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.5 as appropriate, or 20.4, it's missing in here. Whereas January 15, 2019, the township issued a request for proposals. Whereas the appraisal systems of 226 Harrison Town Road, Suite 302 in Glen Rock was the lowest responsive and qualified bidder, and they have submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide the requested services for an amount not to exceed $487,305. 100% of this cost will be covered through the monies received as part of the settlement on the Mecca matter. Whereas appraisal systems has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous year, and that the contract will prohibit appraisal system partners from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas funds are made available from account C01905901, subject to the adoption of the Special Emergency Ordinance Number 3419, which was read this evening, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that a contract be and is hereby awarded to Appraisal Systems, Inc., of Glen Rock, New Jersey, in the form satisfactory to the township attorney in an amount not to exceed $487,305. Be it further resolved that the Mayor and Municipal Clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with appraisal systems to conduct the revaluation of all real property within the Township of Nutley. The term of this contract extends to the submission of the 2021 tax list to the Essex County Tax Board and provides two years of county tax appeal defense in the years 2021 and 2022. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the township. Clerk can be transmitted to the Essex County Board of Taxation. A copy of the contract shall be submitted to the Division of Taxation for the State of New Jersey. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Meredith Donatello, an employee of the Department of Public Safety, be granted a medical leave of absence without pay effective February 1, 2019, through June 1, 2019. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization. Melissa A. Centrella Scholarship Fund, license number 2219, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle to be held Saturday, May 4, 2019, and Special Dragons, license number 2319, on-premise merchandise raffle, be held Tuesday, May 28, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley advertised for proposals for the marketing of recycled materials on March 17, 2015. Whereas the requests for proposals for the marketing of recycled materials were accepted by the Township Clerk on May 8, 2015. Whereas the Township of Nutley reviewed and analyzed all submitted proposals. Whereas the proposals received from Integrity Recycling and Waste Solutions, 111 Route 31, Suite 223, Flemington, New Jersey, was the most favorable proposal for the Township of Nutley. Whereas Integrity Recycling Waste was recommended for a three-year contract award for two one-year options for contract extensions effective July 1, 2015. Whereas the township has selected to exercise the option to extend the contract for one year and determine the contract for one year effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Whereas a change order number one to the contract is authorized for an increase in the contract in the amount of $30,000. And whereas funds are available from account number 901423209, in amount not to exceed $30,000, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. And whereas the original contract amount is being increased in the amount of $30,000 for a total adjusted contract of $60,000. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is a change for the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with Integrity Recycling and Waste Solutions, and is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas bids for 2017 CDVG roadway improvement project, Princeton Street, Hunt Place, Bay R Street, were received and opened on Wednesday, February 14, 2018. Whereas AJM Contractors 300 Color Road, Clifton, New Jersey, was the low bidder. Whereas the township entered into a contract with AJM Contractors for the amount of $235,674.30. Whereas there was a typographical error in Resolution Number 9718, which listed the base bid in an amount of $146,422.30. The correct base bid is amount of $146,423.30 for a total contract price in the amount of $235,675.30. Whereas change order number one to the contract has been authorized for a decrease in the base bid amount of $17,935.25, and a decrease in alternate number one in the amount of And whereas the original contract amount is being decreased in the amount of $47,899.64, be credited to account number GO4113401, GO4110401, and to reflect an adjusted contract price of $187,775.66. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is a change from the contract previously made by the township with a $447,899.64 decrease for project known as 217 CDVG Roadway Improvement Project, Princeton Street, Hunt Place, Bay R Street, and is hereby authorized and approved. With the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Topology 60 Union Street, Number N, Newark, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.4, 20.5, as appropriate, to provide professional planning services primarily related to the ongoing redevelopment of Hop on the Roche and the Chickalini Properties in Township of Nutley on June 8, 2017, by Resolution 133-17. Whereas such services exceeded the original contract in the amount of $50,000. And whereas change order number one was authorized on January 15, 2019, by Resolution Number 15-19, for an increase in the amount of $64,000, which such services have exceeded the amount of the original contract and change order number one. And whereas Mayor Scarpelli had, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number two, provide professional planning services primarily related to ongoing redevelopment of Hop on the Roche Chickalini Properties in Township of Nutley in amount of $1,900. Whereas funds are available from account number 801226205, and certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number two in the amount of $1,900, be it is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.[1591.33]
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye. Just a clarification, Mayor. I believe that this is, this nineteen hundred dollars actually relates to Roche, not to Chickalini property.
I think the contract is for both.
But I think the services relate only to Hop and Roche.
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Which are reimbursed.
Yes, absolutely.
And the others will be?
And Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Or even more, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mrs. Scarpelli, I have four questions this evening, and I have three for you and I have one for Mr. Petracco. But for the three, do you have any updates on the Chickalini building, the Davis building? Or any information about the pool, the recent, the Nutley pool?
On the Chickalini building, we refer that to the planning board to look at as an area in need of redevelopment. On the Davis property, I have no update.
We are in discussion with the Board of Education because, as you know, we purchased that building for the Board because they needed that property in the event that the school referendum went through. They still have a need for that property, so we're still in discussion with them, and ultimately, I see us transferring title to them and getting reimbursed for our expenses.
So we're just going to give Board of Ed, the Davis property, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, Davis property.
The Chickalini building, you said there was, you just announced it was change order one and two. It seems like we're paying more money for contracts, but nobody's come up with any ideas. Am I understanding that correctly?
Not at this point, Mr. Moore, but they will be forthcoming.
They will be forthcoming.
Absolutely.
And recently, we heard that-
Wait, 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 you had a third question, didn't you?
I'm sorry?
Didn't you have a third question?
Yes, I did. Do you hear any rumors?
It was about the-
The pool, Nutley pool, it's not open this year.
Mr. Jenna Zepo, you handle that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moore, that's in litigation right now, so we really can't discuss the details of it. I'm sure you're aware of the public filings that were already made, but we're really not deliberately to discuss that right now.
Thank you. And Mr. Petracco, do we have any date that we can discuss overnight parking?
I have to tell you, you know what, I have to tell you, I've been thinking about that too, but, and I think we should go through that exercise, although I have to tell you, and I won't speak for my fellow commissioners and the mayor, I don't think we have any support to change that overnight parking ordinance at all here. I could be wrong, but, you know, if we're going to go through an exercise when we know that nobody's going to vote to change it, I don't know why we're going through the exercise.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yeah, good evening. Carmine Alessio, eighty-one East Center Street. I'm over here looking at the agenda resolution that Mauro Tucci presented, one twelve dash nineteen. And I'll just read the first little paragraph. In nineteen forty-nine, legislature set aside last Friday of April as Arbor Day to promote the planting of trees and encourage the protection of our forests, forests and fires and pests that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands. In two thousand and two, we do have, in my neck of the woods, there's construction going on, and things do change. In two thousand and two, the house next door to me was knocked down without a permit, okay? And I inquired about it, and it was true, and eventually the permit was ordered. And in the meantime, I had a string of hemlocks down the east side of my, my property. Before you know it, the guys that knocked down the house were with power pruners chopping up my hemlocks. And if you know anything about trees, the hemlocks do not get better. They eventually have insect problems and they die. Now, this is eighteen years later, but taking a step back, trailers were put on that empty lot, abutting my fence to where I couldn't go on the other side and actually try to prune them down and take care of them, because I do have a license for like thirty years in tree activity with the state, just so you know. And I'm willing to just like throw that in the garbage because I get no respect. Now, the trees died with sandy, a few of the branch, like branches fell over. It's because of what I just stated, the problem is butchering a neighbor's tree like mine and creating the problem. Okay, so we'll live with that. Came to plenty of meetings, no one did anything about it. No one assisted me in any kind of like trying to like refurbish these trees or, as far as I'm concerned, they're no good no more. Now, two thousand and twelve comes by. The industrial site behind me, Benjamin Moore, there's no more industry in Nutley. You know, let's leave it at that. Mecca comes along and builds all of these apartments behind me, builds a wall, puts the wall two feet up against my beautiful white pines, two that I've had for since, for twenty-something years, that were in perfect condition. Not one thing wrong with them, they were natured by me and they grew to be lovely white pines. He comes by, puts the wall there, the branches start falling, okay? There's things involved here that if you damage a tree using a bucket loader, like cutting them up from his side of the property, oh, okay, I got a police report and all of that. I was told they would be removed, okay? I inquired about it before the wall was built, but no, because Mr. Alessio has, has opinionated, nothing gets done. Now it's years later, the limbs are falling down, it has flux coming out of it, the two trees, there's, it's scaling, there's a problem with these trees, and they're falling. If you go to my property now, you'll see that I just do absolutely nothing, I just leave them there, because I'm not ready to sink money into trees that were in perfect condition. I mean perfect, they were beautiful, okay? It's my understanding that the law is, when a developer comes into town, he's supposed to, as far as help the neighbor when something like this occurs, like if there's rats coming from a woodland area and they infest the neighbor's property, there's supposed to be some kind of an action to where this stuff gets handled properly and humanely, which nothing has ever been done down there, according to what I'm stating over here. Now, in closing this, okay? Across the street right now, for me, the park entrance, there's a maple tree that's been scaling back, it definitely has a disease, the limbs are falling on the burning bush which is below it, and maybe the town wants Mr. Alessio to look at this stuff, and it may get me mad, but you know what? It doesn't get me mad. This is what gets me mad. This is like a bunch of baloney here. In fact-
Thank you, Mr. Alessio.
Me, I come here and complain, and I get the letter in the mail saying that, in closing, that the trees around my property, it's dangerous to the community, although I did absolutely nothing to create the damage. So that is your department, Mr. Tucci, that has done that in the past. Now I'm coming here and I'm telling you that the white pines, they're going to fall down. I wired them up and that they're going to stay like that. So, you know, that is a bunch of baloney right there.
Thank you, Mr. Alessio.
And I purposely didn't want to-
Time is up, Mr. Alessio.
So, could you address this question out on the afternoon? Is somebody going to do something about this stuff?
I didn't hear a question, thank you, too.
What was your question?
Like, fix the trees by the park entrance, either straighten them out, cut the limbs-
Mr. Alessio, with all due respect-
They're falling down.
We fix all the trees throughout the township, all right? If there's something wrong with that tree, I'm sure Mr. DeMaio is aware of it.
But I came here two years ago and I said that this-
You said what? You say a lot of things. You say a lot of things at a lot of meetings, and sometimes it's clear, sometimes it's not so clear.
It's not so clear.
If you're asking me about that tree, I'm answering you and telling you, we will check it out, and if the tree is hazardous, all right, or if the tree is dying or dead, we will address it.
Okay, now, for Mr. Evans, could I conclude this?
Whoa, 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 Mr. Alessio, that's it. Your time's up.
What's with the white pines? It's my responsibility to have the damaged trees fall on my house after they've been damaged by the variants that have been passed by this town? It's my responsibility?
Mr. Alessio, I think that's, that's really an issue between you and your neighbor.
It's not going to be civil issue either, because they're going to fall, I could care less, I'm wiring them up and they'll let them fall, and then we'll proceed from there.
Mr. Alessio, I would suggest you contact your neighbor and see if he can help you out. That would be my suggestion.
My neighbor.
Your neighbor.
Which neighbor are you talking about? Mr. Mecca?
Mr. Mecca.
I have already sent him letters, but that's not the agenda for the town. When you do a variant, you're supposed to help the neighbor when, when things like occur as far as problems. It's called an impact procedure.